Hi guys, it's Tereka, also known as one dot CPA. In these internet streets and I am back with another video. This video is actually going to be a study session over BEC. Most importantly, the cost accounting, cost measurement, concepts, methods, and techniques. I will say that before we get into the video, that I need to go over some basic housekeeping. And the housekeeping is this, I do not know how to edit videos. So when you see the screen go black at any time, don't be alarmed. It just was me pausing the video so that I can figure out how to share the screen that I want to show you guys. And I've been having a hard time with that, which is why this is my, what, second or third time trying to record a video? Because I realized I was sharing the wrong screen. Also, bear with me as I go through if I make any mistakes. Are you hearing a lot of hums and ahs? I'm doing the best I can. I'm an accountant, just like most of you guys. And I'm not a professional YouTuber, which I had no idea how hard it was to like make videos until I started trying to make them and it's a mess, okay? Anyway, you're the here and there. Let's get started. If this is your first time watching any of my videos, then I would like to specifically say that any CPA exam video that I make is specifically made for people who are like me, who are struggling to pass the exam. Not because they weren't smart enough to pass, but because you really didn't understand the process. You have no guidance. You had no one to help you. Well, I had no one to help me, which is why I'm making these videos, because I really want to help you get out of CPA exam hell and on to living your life. Also, this video can be for an individual who just wants to understand cost accounting. So if you're taking an accounting course and you want to understand cost accounting, this video can be for you. Or if you're taking the CPA exam for the first time, you want to pass on the first time and not like waste your time like I did. It's for you as well. And the purpose of me making these videos is to assist you with learning and studying more effectively. Those other three checkmarks and ultimately to help you become a CPA in a turn, in a very small way, assist with the CPA shortage. I personally think that there are four elements that each candidate needs before they can successfully pass the exam. And this is just a little candidate journey map that I made to show you what you need to do and how you need to do it, since I don't like telling people what they need to do without telling them how they need to do it. Not because I'm bossy or anything, but because I truly desire to help. So in order to pass, you're going to need a full understanding. You're going to need to learn and study, go the extra mile and study. I mean, schedule your exam for an optimal time. So today, we are going to do a little combination of one extra mile, because we're going to use the AICPA blueprints. And you're watching this YouTube video. You're going to obtain an understanding. You're going to know key terminology and concepts. And you're going to prepare fast. So before we go any further, let's take a minute and actually look at the blueprints so you guys can see what we're going to cover in today's session. Okay, so if you have no idea what the blueprints are, they're the key to you passing the CPA exam. I'll say that. But what I want you guys to do is always go to the source to get your information. And because the CPA exam is essentially the AICPA's exam, you want to go to them. Whenever you hear me say the man, I'm mentioning the AICPA. They're the man. So you want to get your information directly from the man. Regardless of what I say in the video, make sure you always go back and cross-reference to whatever like the AICPA says, whatever NASPA's saying, this way to CPA. Any of the official people, you want to go to them. Don't get your information like secondhand or from Reddit forums, okay? Just stay away from the Reddit forums. Back away from them. If you are feeling back far, far away, okay? Because you can go down a rabbit hole of finding people to be miserable with. So just don't do it. Don't. Or yeah. So back to the blueprints. So the blueprints are essentially going to tell you what to study for. A good way to think of the blueprints is to consider it as a syllabus. When you are in college, your professor gives you a syllabus that pretty much tell you everything that you're going to learn, everything you're going to go over, everything that you're going to need to learn to pass the course, right? And your professor is just a facilitator giving you the information that you need to pass the course. So in order to pass the CPA exam, I need for you to shift. Shift the way that you're studying. Do not make your course your foundation for study. No, 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 no. Don't do that. You're going to waste a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of effort. Instead, shift and make the blueprints your syllabus and structure your studying around the blueprints. What do I mean by this? I mean, if you have purchased a course, go look in your resources. There is a blueprint somewhere deep down in the valley, okay? Just look in there. It's in there. And they've already pretty much cross-referenced. Maybe the pages are the chapters where the information can be found. And build your studying around the blueprint. So instead of just going through chapter one, two, three, or section one, two, three for your course, in order, don't do that. Study according to the blueprints. All right, and right now, we are actually in a very unique time, because we're in between the old blueprints getting ready to go away and the new blueprints taking effect. I did go ahead and look at both the old and the new when I was deciding what to make this video on. And I'm going to show you that there's not like a huge difference in the blueprints. Um, everything is just structured differently. I'll say there's not a huge difference in the section that we're going to be studying today. So if we come here, this is the old blueprint. See, it says effective July 2021. Today, we're going to look at cost accounting, which is the under content slash topic. And the skills are remembering and understanding, application, analysis, evaluation, and the representative task. So when you're reading the blueprints, what you need to know is that this area file, which is operations management, is fifteen to twenty-five percent of your weighted score. So it's a pretty important section. And as far as what we're going to learn today, which is number one, the cost measurement, concepts, methods, and techniques. When you are looking at the skills, you have your topic, then your skills. When you're looking at the skills, it's very important that you understand that anything under remembering and understanding or application of the checkmark falls under those two. Nine times out of ten, you are going to be presented with a multiple choice question over that representative task. So the blueprints are telling you, hey, girl or guy, you need to know how to apply cost accounting concepts, terminology, methods, and measurement techniques within an entity. You need to be able to differentiate the characteristics of fixed variable and mixed costs within the entity and compare and contrast the different costing methods such as absorption versus variable and process versus job order costing. So you're going to need to be able to answer a multiple choice question over these topics. The multiple choice question can be very surface level and just ask you basic things to see if you grasp the concept or it can ask you to like calculate something. And also, I will say, when you have a checkmark under analysis or evaluation, nine point nine 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 percent of the time out of ten, you're going to be presented with a CIM over that. So you see how like number two is variance analysis and it has a check by it? You, using the blueprints will let you know like how deep you need to study. So for variance analysis, you know, you need to gain a deeper level of understanding and knowledge to the point where you can solve CIMs over variance analysis. But as far as the cost measurement concepts and methods, you need to know enough that you can answer questions in the form of multiple choice. So your questions aren't going to be as in-depth as a question on analysis or evaluation. And just to prove to you guys that I did look at the new blueprints. So if you're studying for the exam after the new blueprints have taken into effect, then that cost accounting is still there. It did not go away. It's just under the business analysis and reporting section now under area one for business analysis, which, look at this, forty to fifty percent. Forty to fifty percent, okay? But I will say that I watched a couple of videos going over the new structure and I don't think that the test is going to be much harder or easier. I think it's gonna allow for candidates to laser focus in on an area. So if you know that you're not going into tax, then you wouldn't pick tax as your core area, of course. So I think it's a good thing and I think that the AICPA definitely got it right by changing the structure of BEC. Okay, so back to what I was saying. So these first two checks are the same as what we're going to be covering today. And then those last two checks, under number three down here, that's just variance analysis that was on the 2021. So they still have calculating fixed variable and mixed costs and describe and using the different cost methods, including absorption variable, activity-based process, and job order costing. So let's get into it. Listen. Yo, if y'all could see how terrified I am when I'm like trying to change the screen to show you guys what you need to see. It's ridiculous. Trying to get this video made before I go to work, because I promised um, a subscriber that I would get the video up and I know that they are going to start studying for BEC in June. So I was like, oh my God, I have to get this up today. Because I don't want to hinder them from studying. Anyway, back to what I was saying. So yeah, so boom. All right, so whenever you're getting ready to study cost accounting, I personally think you need to understand the fundamentals. So the fundamentals are going to be these three formulas that I think you should get a good grasp of. So the cost formula is one of them. So when you're looking at your course, you're going to see a formula Y equals A plus BX. Or you might see it as total cost equals fixed plus variable times X. It's the same thing. Y is the total cost. A is the fixed cost and B is the variable cost. And X is the volume or whatever the driver is. So understanding that total cost is a combination of fixed cost and variable cost times the driver is going to take you far. All right, another one of the formulas that you'll need to understand is the cost of goods sold formula. And that formula is beginning inventory plus purchases equals the cost of goods available for sale. So then you subtract your ending inventory to get the cost of goods sold. So essentially, beginning inventory plus purchases minus ending inventory is your cost of goods sold. So when you think about it, think of it in everyday terms. If you had a business and you wanted to know, well, how much did it cost me? How much did I pay for these goods that I sold? You would calculate how much did you pay for the inventory that you already had? And then how much more inventory did you purchase during the year? And then, of course, you have to subtract what you didn't sell and that's going to give you your cost of goods sold. So start to train your brain and just think logically about what you're looking at and not so much in cost accounting terminology. Go back and put the terminology in after the concept is solidified in your brain. All right, so the cost of goods manufacturer formula is direct materials used plus direct labor incurred plus overhead applied equals the cost added to production plus your beginning working process inventory minus your ending work and process inventory. And that's how you're going to get your cost of goods manufacturer. So when you're thinking about your cost of goods manufacturer formula, you want to think about, okay, if you are manufacturing something and you're trying to figure out how much did it cost me to make this product, you're going to think, okay, well, I had to buy materials. I had to pay the people like to put my product together. So I had to pay my workers. And then your overhead, when you think overhead, just think about your other expenses. Oh, well, I had to pay rent on this factory because, you know, people be tripping and you just can't be like manufacturing tables in the middle of a park for free without a permit, okay? Even if you were manufacturing tables outside, you had to have a permit. So your permit would be like your overhead applied, okay? And then think about, well, I already had some stuff that I was working on. How much did I pay for the pieces of the table or whatever I was putting together that I was already working on? And then you subtract your ending working process, which is what you haven't sold yet. Hopefully, this makes sense. Okay, so a key to answering cost fundamental questions is understanding the elements that make up cost of goods sold, cost of goods manufacturing to the point where you can back into the different answers. So you must be able to think critically to pass CPA exam. In this next slide, we're going to talk about those elements. Okay, so this is just a page that I created to show you the total cost breakdown structure. So within total cost, you're always going to have two main costs, which are your manufacturing costs, which are costs related to your product, and your non-manufacturing costs, which are costs that are not related to your product that would exist even if you weren't making a product, but you still had a business. So anything related to the actual cost of the product that you're making is a product cost, which is a manufacturing cost. And anything that is related to the business that you would still have, even if you weren't manufacturing anything, is a period cost and a non-manufacturing cost. So under product cost, your product cost is always a combination of material cost, direct labor, and manufacturing overhead. So think about it. When you are making a product, you're going to have those three elements. You're going to have the materials, because where are you going to make it out of? You can't make it out of air, okay? Can't make nothing out of, out of nothing. So you have to have something. And then you have to have labor, because you have to have people to help you make it. If you have a manufacturing company, you can't be like everybody on the assembly line, right? And your manufacturing overhead is just like I was saying before, indirect materials or indirect labor and other expenses. So those are considered indirect costs. Now, if we go back to what I was saying in previous slide about understanding how to mix and match things, back into numbers, understanding that a product cost is a direct material, direct labor, and manufacturing overhead, and understanding that a prom cost is direct materials and direct labor. And also understanding that direct costs are direct costs and direct labor is going to take you far, okay? It's going to take you far. So how are you going to remember this? You are going to remember this, because direct costs are direct materials and direct labor. Direct call says direct, direct material says direct, and direct labor says direct. So in your mind, just think, if it has direct in front of it and if it is a direct material, direct labor, then it's a direct cost, which is also a prom cost. A prom cost is the main thing. So if you're manufacturing, what are the main things that you need? You need materials and you need labor. So prom, prom is direct. And then with conversion, just associated with, what do you need to change the direct materials into something? So you know that direct materials is never going to be a part of your conversion cost, because you're changing the material into something. You're converting it to convert your materials into something. You need labor and you need a place to change it and additional help. So anything that falls under additional material and indirect labor. So indirect labor and direct material and other expenses, which are your indirect costs, are going to be your conversion cost. So direct labor and anything else that you need to change the direct material into the final product is your conversion. And off to the other side over here for non-manufacturing costs, your period costs. Those are the costs that are going to be expensed over time, well, immediately. So your product calls are inventoryable, meaning you're able to capitalize these costs. But your non-manufacturing costs, which are your period costs, are the costs that are going to be expensed immediately, like within the period. So your selling expenses and your admin expenses are going to be expensed immediately. Are going to be expensed immediately. So what else can I tell you guys? Go back and study and figure out, okay, well, it's easy for you to know what a direct cost is, what direct labor is, and what manufacturing overhead is. The key to passing is understanding like how to mix and match this stuff. And I will say, one of the keys to passing your exam is understanding what the difference is between direct labor and indirect labor. So when you're thinking of direct labor, they'll give you a question that's going to give you, they'll probably ask you something strange about, oh, well, calculate the, the direct labor cost for this job or whatever. And it's going to give you different wages for different people. So you know that if a person is actually touching the product, like they're hands-on with it, then that's going to be direct labor. If they're not like directly touching it, then it's not direct labor, it's indirect labor. And that's going to make or break you. So go back and make sure you study that and grasp that concept. All right, fixed variable and mixed costs. So the key is to differentiate the characteristics of the fixed variable and mixed cost. Fixed costs are total fixed cost does not change in the short run. The fixed cost per unit changes as the number produced increases or decreases. So if you go back and you look at that original formula that I was telling you guys about, which is a foundation. So remember how the formula said total cost equals fixed cost plus variable times X. So when you think about fixed costs, think about this. Fixed cost is never going to change in the short run. It's always fixed. But your fixed cost per unit will change as the number produced increases or decreases. So, okay, I can explain fixed costs to y'all in a funny way. So back when I was in college, I'm going to use some weird little numbers, but just catch what I'm saying to you. So back when I was in college, some friends and I, we wanted to order some food, right? So it was four of us, one, two, three, four. Let's say, which I can't even eat pizza because I'm allergic to it. We're going to use pizza. Say we were ordering a pizza and the pizza cost, what, twenty dollars? And it's four of us. So immediately, you're going to think that because it's four of us and because the pizza costs twenty dollars, that, okay, we all go chip in five dollars, right? Well, this one particular girl tried to chip in, let's say, two, forgetful. So me, the devil was in me, y'all. I was like, why would we allow for her to chip in two on twenty? And we're going to have to pay like over six dollars. It's funny, because if you calculate it, I want to say it's eighteen divided by three, like, I think eighteen divided by three is like C or something like that. Anyway, so I was like, why would we let her put two on twenty when it's four of us and the rest of us are going to have to, you know, eat that cost? So being petty, I was like, we can just exclude her and just pay for all of it ourselves. So if you do twenty divided by three is six, 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 because I had the devil in me, right? But if we were to allow her to, um, what was I trying to say? Okay, yeah, the twenty dollars. So essentially, if the four of us were to pay five dollars, it would be less, right? But if we were going to go with me being petty and deciding that we were just going to exclude her, the cost would go up, because it would be less people to pay the same amount. So the amount is going to be staying the same. The pizza is still going to be twenty dollars, regardless of if, you know, she putting twenty-two in on twenty or not. So just remember, like, if you have more people paying for something, then the fixed cost per unit, the amount that each person is going to pay is going to increase or decrease, depending on how many people are paying for it. So in our case, say, if we were getting a pizza and it was twenty dollars and it was four of us, then boom, we would have paid five dollars. But if we were going to go with me having the devil in me and being like, no, she not going to put two in on twenty, we just going to exclude her, you know? Period, okay? Then the cost would have went up and we would all pay like six, six, six as the devil. So when you think about it, think about this, the total cost of the pizza never changed. What changed was how much each of us were paying, so the cost per unit. In that case, each of us, me and my other three petty friends, no, two, my other two petty friends, we would have been cost per unit. Or even if we would have kept the other girl and like allowed her to put two in on twenty, when it was four of us, then she would have been a unit as well. So think of it that way. So in your mind, just start thinking about, just start thinking about like everyday things and it'll all come together for you, okay? Sorry for the rambling. Back to the lesson. So variable costs, variable costs are cost per unit doesn't change in the short run. The total variable cost increases or decreases with volume. So that, um, that goes back to the formula. So TC equals variable fixed plus variable times X. So your variable cost is always going to be the same. It's not going to change in the short run. It's going to increase or decrease with volume. So according to, um, how many, the driver, whatever is driving it. Um, your mixed cost is going to be a combination of fixed and variable cost elements. So if you were, say you're twenty-one. I think I saw this online and I thought it was funny. Say you're twenty-one years old and you can't rent a car, because I think you have to be like twenty-five to rent a car. I'm not sure. Back in the day, you used to have to be like twenty-five to rent a car. So I saw like pictures of people like renting U-Hauls and like going to freak me. Crazy little stuff. Anyway, so if you were going to rent a U-Haul, because you were young and ratchet, you wanted to go somewhere and you weren't old enough to actually rent a car, then you would be one of these people that I saw online renting these U-Haul trucks. So an example of a mixed cost would be these people paying the actual cost per day of the truck that they rented and Of the truck that they rented and the mileage. Which is absurd, like why anybody would go for that? I don't know. Maybe you can get unlimited mileage now, not sure. But. A a mixed cost is gonna be a combination of your fixed cost, which is your cost per day. Plus your mixed cost, which is like your mileage. And if you think about that, even if you're not ratchet and you decide that you wanted to like move yourself, so you rented a U-Haul. Think about this. You already know what mixed costs are and you know how to manipulate. Because if you were moving. You would not call a U-Haul company in the next city over. When you're moving within the same city, you're gonna call a U-Haul that is closest to you because. You understand the variable cost element of mixed costs. You know. That the further away that you are, the more that mileage is gonna cost you. And the more that mileage costs you, the more your total cost overall is going to be. So you already understand mixed costs. So when you go back and you. Start looking at your course, like just start thinking in terms of everyday things when you think about fixed cost. Variable cost and mixed cost. Alright, so the mixed cost calculation again is fixed cost plus. Variable cost per unit times the cost driver. Remember the cost driver, when you think about it, think about the cost driver as um. The U-Haul example that I use. The cost driver would be miles in that case. So. You would get your base cost, which is your fixed cost, and then you would get your variable cost per unit, which is. However much it costs you fifty cents, sixty nine cents per mile, and then your cost driver would be your mile. So just. Think in those terms. Um and then your variable. Your total variable cost is your variable cost per unit times the volume produced. So. It's gonna be how much it costs per unit times how much or how many you produced. Moving right along, absorption versus variable costing. Okay, so you want to go ahead and take a screenshot of the way to set these problems up. And take a, take a good look, just pause and look and tell me what you see. You're gonna see that under absorption and variable that it starts off the same. You have direct materials, you have direct labor, you have variable overhead. But then things change when you get to fixed overhead. So the number one thing that you need to remember to pass the exam is that variable. Costing does not include fixed overhead. It just does not include it. It's taken out after you get your contribution margin. So with absorption costing, absorption is. The cost, the costing that um Gap is going to use. So if you are reporting outside, they're gonna wanna see absorption costing because they're gonna wanna see like. All of your costs. They wanna see like, well, how much did you spend on fixed overhead? To get to your gross margin. So you're always gonna start off with your sales. So you know how to calculate your sales, your sales is gonna be. However much you're selling your product for, times time however many you sold. Then you're gonna calculate your direct materials, your direct labor. Your variable overhead is included in both, and then you take out fixed overhead for absorption and variable. Um it's the N A expenses, which is selling and administrative expenses. For variable to get your contribution margin. So with absorption, you're. You want to start by getting to your gross margin. And with um variable costing, you want to get to your contribution margin. So let's stop and think for a minute. When you go back and you start studying. What you're gonna notice is that with contribution margin, you already know. How to get to your contribution margin. You know that. Your sales minus your variable cost is gonna be your contribution margin. Well, think, what is your contribution margin? Is how much you're contributing to pay for your other expenses, okay? So think of it in that terms and it'll make more sense to you why you take out your fixed overhead and your fixed. S and A expenses um. After contribution margin when you're dealing with um variable costing. So you know that contribution margin always includes. Um a variable component. So just start thinking logically when you're working your problems. And trying to get down to operating income with variable costing. And then if you go back and you look at absorption, you know that after you get your gross margin, that's when you take out your S and A. Um expenses. Now notice. With S and A expenses, all of the S and A expenses come out after you calculate your gross margin with absorption costing. To get down to operating income. But with variable costing. That S and A variable component is taken out before you get to contribution margin because. Contribution margin, um you always have to take out all of your variables to get the contribution margin. And a key to passing your exam is knowing how to handle fixed. Um overhead and also your um S and A expenses. So the main thing to remember is that when you think of absorption, think of all. So you're gonna take out all your fixed overhead and you're gonna think, take out all your S and A expenses. So think about. Absorption starts with A, A equals all gap. Um. It has a A in it, it does not have a B in it. So you're gonna know like A, A, A. So absorption. You're gonna take out everything, all, and it follows gap. And as far as your variable, when you get a question, more than likely you'll be presented a question. And the key to getting the harder questions, which count for more points. The key to getting those correct is to just know that. They're gonna give you a question more than likely. Or you may be presented with a question more than likely that's gonna try to hammer you and nail you on S and A expenses. So just know that if the question is asking from an absorption point of view. That that S and A expense is going to um. Include all of your S and A and then if it's variable. You gotta know how to break out variable above like the line for contribution margin and then. How to break out fixed after. And then also, you need to understand that total overhead. Is a combination of your fixed overhead and your variable overhead. So you may get a question and it's gonna try to trick you and ask you about overhead. So regardless of. If the question is absorption or a variable costing question, make sure when you're um calculating overhead. That you calculate your total overhead, you calculate your fixed and your variable overhead and you know. That if. Something changes in the question and they wanna know how much um. Your operating income is now and it has a change in overhead, then that is the key to passing that question. Knowing how much the variable overhead is and knowing how much the fixed overhead is and how much it changed. So. When you go back to your course, like laser focusing on those things and you'll be fine. And if you have questions about this because it doesn't make sense, um just. Put it in the comments or just email me and I'll um walk you through it. Okay, so basically like I was saying, the key to getting your absorption and variable costing questions right. Is to understand how each handles fixed cost, how each handles S and A expenses and the effects of both on operating income. So think of this, an increase in in inventory is gonna increase your absorption. Um operating income and a decrease in inventory is going to increase your variable. Operating income. Gap uses absorption costing and management uses uses variable costing. Management is not allowed to use. Um absorption costing because then they could just. Make a whole bunch of items that they're not gonna sell and run up a bill and get. Paid for it. Because their their um their bonuses are tied to. Certain things. Like an example of this is a long time ago, I worked a job where. We had salespeople. And we had this one guy, smart when I think of it. He was a scammer, but he was smart. He came in. And he like wrote up all these fake bogus sales and he got himself like a ten thousand dollar commission. Which they pay their commissions out like right away. So if you. Made ten thousand in commissions in March, that first part of April, you were gonna get that check, okay? So that guy ran up that um that ten K and before it can turn to bad debt, he was out of there, okay? So think of it that way. So that's one of the reasons why. They don't want management being able to use um absorption costing because otherwise they could just. Make like a whole bunch of products that they aren't truly gonna sell so that they can increase um their bonuses. Which is a no. Alright, so next we're gonna talk about job order versus process costing. Job order costing is used to allocate costs to special order or unique products. And there is no finished goods inventory and subsidiary accounts are created within work and process to track the costs. The key to understanding how direct costs and indirect costs are accumulated. And the journal entries to trace the cost incurred for the job. So. Learning how the direct and indirect costs are accounted for and tracing them for the job is. Going to help you to understand the difference between job order and process costing. Alright, for job order costing, direct costs are accumulated in journal entries. Um the entry to record materials purchased on account. So when you're working with job order costing. You have to first remember that when you're purchasing materials, even though you may be purchasing materials for. Um multiple jobs, you're going to have to account for the materials just for that one job. But. You already purchased materials, not just for that one job, but because you needed. Materials for your business operations as a whole. So think of. The very first entry as the entry to purchase materials for your factory as a whole. And the way to do that is to increase materials inventory inventory account and to credit your accounts payables. So think about what you just did. You just said, okay, we up two hundred thousand in material, but. We also have this bill that we need paid. That is gonna be two hundred thousand because we ordered this material on account. So that's up as well. So you know that in order to increase your inventory account, you're gonna debit it. And in order to increase your accounts payables account, you're gonna credit it. Okay, direct costs accumulation journal entries. The entry to record materials used for a particular job. So although you just spent two hundred thousand. Purchasing materials for your factory as a whole, somebody called you and said, hey, we need. I don't know, five thousand tables and it's going to cost you a hundred thousand in inventory. To get the materials that you need to make those five thousand tables. So you wanna start tracking for just that job, right? So you wanna keep track, so you know how much of the materials of my two hundred thousand in materials. That I use on just this one particular job because you wanna know. How much you're gonna be able to like build these people for in the end, right? So you wanna keep a track of. How much it actually costs you. So to do that, you're gonna create a work in process account for that particular job. So we're gonna say the job is one, two, three, four. So you're going to increase that job by a hundred thousand and then with your. Materials inventory, you're gonna decrease it by a hundred thousand because you took a hundred thousand out for that job. Um the next thing that you're want to do is to. Record your entry for the labor use for that particular job. So. You're gonna have wages because you have to pay people, right? You don't want nobody coming after you like trying to fight you about your money. So we're gonna be. Good business owners and we're gonna pay people. We're gonna pay them the amount that we said we're gonna pay them. So. In order to record. How much you pay that person for that job, you are going to increase the work in process account for that job number. By the thirty thousand that you're paying on your people. And then you're going to credit your wages payable account because you have to pay people thirty thousand dollars. Moving right along. So. As far as your indirect cost accumulation journal entries, the entry to record manufacturing overhead for indirect material. You're going to record your um manufacturing overhead in a control account. And the control account is used because there are usually different types of. Manufacturing overhead, like you can have materials, indirect labor. Whatever. But because it's a cost pool, you're gonna accumulate all of that stuff in just on a. A control account. So let's say here, you're recording five thousand dollars in materials inventory. Indirect materials, I'll say that, just so we're clear. Um so. What you wanna do is you want to debit the five thousand in the manufacturing overhead control account. And then you want to credit five thousand for materials inventory. For wages, you're gonna do the same thing. You're going to debit the control account and credit the wages payable account. Okay, so remember how I was saying that it's all kinds of. Um manufacturing overhead that that you can accumulate. So in this example, we have. Taxes payable, prepaid insurance and accumulated depreciation. But notice what you had in common. All of it is going to that manufacturing control account. You're increasing that account because. You're recording those costs to run up the bill for how much you're gonna have to charge these people. For those five thousand tables, right? So one of the reasons why you have like an account for property taxes. Or prepaid or accumulated depreciation is just. So that when you go back and you look at your books, you'll know exactly what was paid. Instead of like raking your brain and trying to figure out at the end of the year, well, what the heck was that forty thousand dollars for? What was that eight thousand dollars for? You wanna keep clean books and. Therefore, you wanna like have these subsidiary accounts set up so that it's easy for you to like see what you need to do. Okay, the total overhead incurred is the debit balance in the manufacturing overhead control account. So essentially, it's everything you enter added together. And by everything. I mean like your property taxes, your prepaid insurance, your accumulated depreciation and equipment. And your wages payable. So every single indirect wage is payable. So anything that's in this manufacturing overhead. Um control account is included. Um job costing and indirect cost allocation. So overhead. Application rate is something that you'll also need to understand. The overhead application rate is always based off estimates. You may have get a question that asks you about that. Just know that overhead is always estimate. It's estimated annual total overhead cost over estimated total units of allocation base. So the base is always going to be the cost. So the base is always going to be the cost strike. So the main thing to remember about your application rate is that is an estimate. Um, your overhead applied is going to be the units of. Overhead driver times the application rate, so in order to get what. Was actually applied, you're going to have to first figure out what your overhead application rate is. And then you're gonna multiply it by whatever the driver is. Um, majority, job order. Applied overhead, okay, so the entry to record manufacturer overhead apply is just going to be. A debit to your. Um, working process and then whatever the job number is, that little subsidiary account that you created for. And then you're going to credit manufacturer overhead apply. So the journal entries are pretty straightforward. Um. And the entries to record the job completion and the sale. Of the product on account, so after you're done with everything, you're gonna tally everything up, that's why I put calculate. These numbers that I have over here are just. They're phone numbers, they're fake numbers that I just put in because. I didn't have time to like go back and like calculate all this stuff, cuz y'all, I'm supposed to be at work, okay? It's almost eight o'clock and I'm sitting in here. Completely like not dressed, hair tied, like. Not ready for work at all, but I. I'm gonna get this video done, okay? So anyway, you're just gonna go back and you're gonna calculate. Everything and you're going to increase your finished goods. By putting a debit in it and then you're going to. Um, credit your work in process for that subsidiary subsidiary job, one, two, three, four. You're gonna credit it, so essentially what you're doing is you're removing it from work in process and you're moving it to finished goods. So think about it, prior to um, entering this. Credit for this job, everything else was a debit because you were running up the bill to see how much it's gonna cost you to um. Make those five thousand tables, but once you're done with those five thousand tables. Hypothetically speaking, we're gonna say it costs you forty thousand dollars total. So they have forty thousand for those tables, it went to finished goods. Um. And then accounts receivable is just going to be when you sold the tables, okay? When you sell the tables, we, these numbers don't even make sense, y'all, but. Just brought with me, the tables were sold at a deep discount, okay? You sold the tables. For less than what it costs you to make them. I don't know why you would do that, but you did, so you sold the table for eight thousand dollars. But you sold the table. On um, an account, so your accounts receivable went up by eight thousand and then your sales. Um, was eight thousand as well. And your cost of goods sold. Um. You just put twenty thousand and your finished goods, twenty thousand, so essentially. What you want to do is just. Don't really pay attention to the numbers here, pay more attention to. The labels, so when the job is finished, you're always going to. Debit finished goods for the amount. That this, the sub job was for, so. The special job, however much it was for, that's how much you're gonna debit finished goods for and you're gonna credit. That special job for that amount and then with accounts receivable, however much you sold the product for. That is what you're gonna debit your accounts receivables for and you're gonna credit your sales for. And then with cost of goods, so however much you spent on the cost of goods to make um. That table, then those five thousand tables, you're gonna. Debit cost of goods and then you're gonna credit finished goods, so here. The numbers, they don't make sense because I was just putting numbers in because I wanted to have. A placeholder, but what I wanted to show you was. The interest to record the job completion in the sale of the product on account. So these one, two, three, these three entries would be something that you would get in the form of. A SAM. Alright, uh, so process count, process counting, process counting is used to assign cost. To mass production of the same or similar goods, the key to answering process counting questions correctly. Is to know how to calculate equivalent units and the weighted average and FIFO method. FIFO is first in, first out. So the weighted average. What I did was I went and I pretty much just wrote out. All the steps that you need to take to be able to solve these problems, so I would advise you to like. Get your phone and take a screenshot of all these steps and if you. Follow these steps, you will get the answer every single time, not sometimes, but. Every single time, so when you are calculating weighted average. The first step is to begin with your beginning work in process. And then you add your started and completed units. And you're gonna end with your ending work in process. That is gonna get your total incomplete units, okay? So that's your step one, your step one is just to calculate your total incomplete units. So your step two is to solve for direct materials. Um. Equivalent units produced. I think that's what um, EUP stands for, I can't quite remember, I just know it's EUP. Okay, so to calculate step two, you're gonna take your beginning work in process, so. This number, your beginning, is always gonna be zero under weighted average, so that is a key. Anything that I put in purple. Is very important for you to remember, so when you go back and you look at your screenshot, think, okay, purple. Purple means that it's important, think of like royalty, okay, so it's. Imperative that you remember this, so your step two, your beginning working process, which is gonna be zero. Under um, weighted average and then you add your started and completed. Your started and completed will always be the number completed under weighted average, so. If you're under weighted average, however many the question says is completed, that's, that's the number that's gonna be your started and completed. And then you're gonna add your ending working process times the percent completed for direct materials. To get your total EUP units for direct materials. So that's your step two. Now, we're still working on the weighted average. So your step two B is to calculate the cost associated with um. With direct. Uh, can't see. Alright, so. Shoot. Sorry, okay, so your step to B is to calculate the cost associated with direct materials. So remember, if you go back here. You calculated your total EUP units for ma- direct materials only, right? So your second half of step two, which is B, is to calculate the cost associated with those direct materials. So to do that, you're gonna start with your beginning working process for materials only. And you're gonna add your cost incurred for materials only and that is going to give you your. That's gonna give you your total material costs. So your total material costs divided by the number of EUP for materials. Equals your material costs per EUP, so let's go back. So. In step one. You were just trying to get your total incomplete units, in step two, you were trying to get your total. Equivalent units of production for direct materials, so you're trying to calculate, well. How many equivalent units? Did I make and then in step three, you were trying to get the cost, how much did. Those materials cost you? And so here, to get your material costs per equivalent unit. You're taking how much it costs times how many. You had produced to get the material costs per EUP, I hope this makes sense. Alright, so with weighted average, let's go back and think about what I um. What I said like previously about you understanding that. Your prom costs are always gonna be your um, material costs and your conversion costs. So to get the total cost of your, your product. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, not your prom cost, your product cost, your product cost is always gonna be your material cost plus your conversion cost. So. To get the total cost of your product, you're also going to have to calculate. The cost for conversion, so your third step for weighted average is to solve for the conversion cost. Of the equivalent units of production, so you're gonna follow this same one, two, three methodology. That I'm giving you and it is to first start with your beginning working process. And because you're still under weighted average, that number is always going to be zero. Then you're gonna add your started and completed. Which will always be the number completed under weighted average, so however many you completed, that is. Um. What's gonna be your number for. Number two here and then for number three, you're gonna calculate your ending working process times the percent completed for conversion cost. So if you were paying attention, your brain should have been like, oh, okay, I see what we're doing. We're gonna calculate and figure out what the total cost. What the total units were for um, equivalent. Units of production for materials and then we're gonna figure out what the total equivalent units for conversion costs were. You're, this is what you're doing, then you're gonna get the cost. Per unit for each. So. You take your ending. Whip and you multiply it by the percent completed for your conversion cost to get your total. EUP units for conversion costs. So then, so three B. You're basically doing the same thing, you're taking your beginning whip. Which is gonna be for your conversion cost only. And then you're gonna add your cost incurred for conversion cost only to get your total conversion cost. So your total conversion cost. Divided by the number of equivalent units of production. For conversion costs equals your conversion cost per EUP. And then the final step is just to calculate the total cost per EUP. So to get your total cost, because remember what I said way back at the beginning of the video. Your total cost for any product is always gonna be your material costs plus um. Your conversion costs, which are your. Pretty much your labor and your overhead, so materials, um, overhead. And labor is gonna always make up your total cost, right? So with weighted average, you're just going through all of these steps to figure out what your cost is per equivalent unit. So you're gonna add. The cost that you got for number one and the cost that you got for number two to come up with the total cost per EUP. So if you go back. Always pay close attention to what color I put something in, so if it's in purple, it's to guide you. And to let you know that this is important, but anything that's in green. Is pretty much what you're going to be trying to um, come up with the total for to answer a question, so. Green is where the money is, okay, and once you pass the CPA exam, your salary is gonna go up. So when you're thinking of. When you're going back and you're going through this video and you're using these steps, which it looks like a lot of steps, but once you get the hang of it. You're gonna be able to fly through it, I broke it down like as simple as I possibly could because I want you guys to truly understand it. But just know that you need to remember whatever is in purple to get you to the green. The green is the answer, the answer that you'll need to pass the CPA exam and get to the money, so. You're gonna need to calculate the total EUPs for direct materials. You're gonna need the total material costs. You're going to need. Your material cost per EUP. You're going to need your total EUP units for conversion costs. And you're gonna need your total conversion costs and also your conversion costs per EUP. And of course, these two at the top. Um, I showed you how to get those and ultimately get to total cost per EUP, so you can get a multiple. You can get all kind of questions surrounding this, you can get multiple choice questions, you can get um, a SAM. So just. Know all of the elements for. Weighted average, just go through the steps, one, two, three, four, take your time, go through the steps. If you go through the steps, I guarantee you will get every single question right every time, okay? So with FIFO, um, your step one is beginning working process, your step two. Is to add started and completed and then your step three is to add your ending whip to get your total incomplete units. Okay. For step two, you're gonna solve for direct materials EUP. So essentially, you're solving for the same thing, so if you go back and you like look at this video, you're gonna notice that. The items that are in green are the same under both. It's just a different way to get to the same thing and always remember that anything in purple is imperative that you remember it, okay? So step two, solving for direct materials EUP. Step one under step two A is to get your beginning whip, so. Your beginning whip is always going to be an amount of whip times. One minus the percent given in the problem for materials, so when you're solving for materials. The original amount of work in process that you're given, you're gonna take that amount and then you're gonna multiply that. Times one minus the percent that's given in the problem for materials. If you remember this, you will get all of your FIFO questions correct, okay? You will not miss. Hmm, the second step is to add your started and completed. Your started and completed will always be the number transferred out minus the original beginning whip unaltered. So. However many you took out, you're gonna subtract that from the original amount that you began with. Don't add or take anything away from what I have in purple and you will always pass, okay? Your third step is going to be to add the ending whip times the percent completed for direct materials. So what do you notice? You notice that your ending whip times the percent completed for direct material is basically. The same step that you followed under um, weighted average, right? And once you go through these steps. You're going to get your total EUP units for direct materials. Um, okay, your step two B is going to be to calculate the cost associated with direct materials. And to do that, you're gonna add your beginning whip, which is going to be for materials only in the current period cost only. And then you're also gonna add your cost incurred for materials only plus. For materials only in the current period cost only, so for. for materials only in the current period cost only. So for FIFO, because you're focused in on the first in and the first out out, you have to pay close atten- yeah, close attention to your period cost. So once you add those two together, you're gonna get your green total, which is your total material cost. Your next step is going to be to calculate your material cost per EUP by taking that total material cost and dividing it by the number of EUP for materials to get your material cost per EUP. So go back. Step two A is going to give you the number of units and then your step two B is going to give you the total material cost. So two A and two B are gonna give you everything you need to come up with the cost per EUP. Um three A is going to be to solve for conversion costs EUP. So essentially, you're gonna be doing the same thing, but this time just for a conversion cost. So you're gonna take your beginning whip. And remember that that is always gonna be your ami- original amount of whip times one minus the percent given in the problem for a conversion cost. And then you're gonna add your started and completed, which that is always gonna be the number transferred out minus your beginning whip unaltered with nothing done to it. And then you're gonna add in your ending whip times the percent completed for conversion costs. And that's gonna give you your total EUP units for conversion costs. Step three B is going to be to calculate costs associated with conversion costs. So essentially, this is the same thing that you did for your materials, but you're doing it for conversion costs. You're still getting your beginning whip, but this time for conversion costs only and for current period only. And you're still getting your cost incurred, but this time for a conversion cost only in current period only. That's gonna give you your total conversion cost. Once you have your total conversion cost, you're gonna divide that by the number of EUP for conversion costs, and it's gonna give you conversion cost per EUP. And your last step is going to be to calculate the total cost per EUP, which is material cost per EUP plus conversion cost per EUP. And that's gonna give you your total cost. So remember, if you go all the way back to the beginning of the lesson, when I told you that your total cost is going to be your total product cost is material cost plus conversion cost, material cost plus direct labor plus manufacturing overhead. So this is just another way to get to that same thing, but on a deeper level. So the key differences in the methods is the treatment of beginning working process. The treatment of started and completed. And FIFO only includes cost incurred in the period, the current period only. So how to remember? This is how I taught myself to remember. FIFO includes beginning work in process. So think of the letter F. The letter F is at the beginning of the alphabet, so include it. You're gonna include beginning work in process because you just think of like F is at the beginning of the alphabet, beginning of alphabet, B, the beginning working process, okay? And then the W is at the end of the alphabet. So end all thoughts of beginning working process when working with weighted average problems for EUP, okay? You want dead it, you wanna end it. W is at the end, ended it. You are thinking of including beginning working process for any weighted average problem, you're gonna get it wrong every single time. So don't think about it, end it. Okay, no more thoughts of it. So okay, guys. And I'm going to end with my anchor scripture, which is Habakkuk two and two, which says, "And the Lord answer me, write the vision, make it plain on tablets, so he may run who reads it." And I sincerely hope that this lesson made sense. I was kinda rushing through it because I wanted to make sure to get it up. I'm supposed to be at work right now. But because God is dope, I'm gonna walk up in there super late and super proud, okay? Hope this video helps you guys. Until next time, always remember that God is dope. Bye.